Rise for pledge allegiance. Susie, roll call please.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweigel.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here on our motion to approve tonight's consent agenda and include the closed session. And it's due at the end motion.
All support.
Discussion or changes on anything? Sue.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweigel.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Our citizen discussion for items not on the agenda. Oh, good. No old business, new business five, number A, the wastewater evaluation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I have, I've been working with PFM with the valuation study that was done for the water and wastewater facilities. Ben Kappenstein from PFM is here tonight. He's going to be presenting this to you. And if you have any questions, we can, we can go back to him. So I'm going to turn this over to Ben.
Sounds good, Mike. Good evening, everyone.
We're supposed to say hello.
Happy birthday. Alright, here we go. Alright, so thanks for the intro, Mike. So Ben Kappenstein from PFM here. Going to talk about the valuation of the water treatment system and the wastewater treatment system tonight. So I have two separate presentations. We're going to start with water. I'll go through this. Feel free to interrupt if you have questions as we're going. I'll try to tick it over pretty quick. And we'll jump right into it here. So to give a little background, I've been working with the city here with Mike to value the water treatment system. One thing that we do want to make clear is that we're only looking at the treatment system. So that's just the plant and associated items there. We're not looking at the distribution system, which is the pipes under the ground. The reason is because we're going to talk about the only potential purchaser right now is Lowell Township. And they are only interested in the treatment portion of the system. So the following presentation is going to talk about the valuation. At point three there, there's just a couple of basic assumptions that we always list. Really, a couple important issues with size value that we want to talk about. So whenever you're looking at potentially selling utility system, the value is important, but there's other things that are important as well. So we always want to make sure that we're keeping rates, employees, and transparency in the front of our minds. Rates is always the biggest topic. So whenever you're looking at potentially selling, rates are going to be the first question. What's going to happen to the rates? We're going to talk a lot about rates tonight on both the water side and the sewer side. So I'm going to hold that for a little bit later. Employees, point B, the second thing is employees. So if there's employees that are dedicated to the system, how will they be protected in any deal? If this would go any further, that would be something that would be worked out at that time. Third point is public outreach and transparency. So obviously with this L of utility system, the public is going to be very interested in what's going on. And we always tell our clients to make sure that we're keeping the public in the loop, being very transparent with the process. And I do just want to note right now that there's been no decisions made, obviously. The system's not being sold. Only some due diligence here to get evaluation of the system. So talking about the water treatment assets, there's a lime softening water treatment plant, 1.75 billion gallons per day, four brown supply wells, and the system provides water not just for the city, but also for Lowell Township. There's a lab and associated equipment, new SCADA equipment at the water treatment plant, which we saw when we were there, which was really nice. And there's some other miscellaneous equipment that gets included in our evaluation as well. Important information. So as I said previously, the only potential purchaser of the system that we were considering is Lowell Township. So this is not an open market valuation, not a fair market valuation. If there are other buyers out there, and there could be private buyers, public buyers, we are not considering them in this valuation. This is simply a valuation to look at Lowell Township acquiring the assets of the city. So when we look at that, and there's no private buyer involved, typically, the approach that we like to take is, is the income approach. So there's three different approaches for valuation. There's the income approach, the cost approach, and the market approach. The cost and market approaches, we're going to talk about those. But the income approach values future cash flows. And that's really what's important to the city or to the township, whoever's running the system. The other approaches really come into play more when a regulated and private utility is involved. And we'll get into that a little bit more on later slides. So we're going to start off with the cost approach. Really, what the cost approach looks at is how much the assets cost on the day that you bought them, when were they placed in the service, and then how much have they depreciated since that time? And that comes up with what we call book value, or a depreciated original cost. So we got an asset list from the city. And the city also gave us a breakout. We worked really hard with Mike on breaking out the treatment versus distribution system assets. Again, the distribution system's not being considered for sale, only the treatment system. Point B there, PFM adjusted the useful service lives. So a lot of times when a city gives us an asset list, you'll have useful lives on it for the assets. Typically, accountants come up with these useful lives. And nothing against accountants that have an accounting degree. But accountants typically will use a lower useful life than we can actually expect in practice. So an example would be, they might put a 30-year useful life on a wastewater treatment plant. It might really be 60 years or 70 years in practice. So what we like to do is we like to extend those useful lives to more account for what we think they'll actually survive for. Once we did that, we came up with a net book value of the treatment system of $804,000. So there you can see the calculation. The original total cost of the water treatment assets was 2.3 million. Since they've been put into service, they've depreciated about 1.5 million. And there you, you're left with that 804,000 depreciated original cost or book value, as we call it. Point three there, typically when you're selling utility system, you're going to get a multiple of that book value. Okay? You're not going to just get paid that 804. You're going to get paid somewhere in a range of 1.25 to 1.75 times that value. We've seen things come in under that 1.25. We've seen many things come in above that 1.75. But this is a typical range that we see in the market and where we value this system. So you can see, we're talking about, you know, pretty low numbers. You know, 1.25 is a million, 1.75 is 1.4. So relatively low numbers. That moves us to the income approach. First thing we did here is we looked at the historical financials. Because the income approach is just going to look at cash flows. So it's going to look at your operating revenues, your operating expenses, and then what's left. So here you can see the historical operating revenues. Now, this is for the whole water system, not just the treatment system. This would be what's included in your audits. So this is the entire system. And then what we did was, we asked Mike to break out the treatment versus distribution system, cash flows. So again, we're only looking at the treatment system. So when we do that breakout, you can see in that box there, the treatment system actually has a negative cash flow, $59,000, negative $59,000. So what this means is, if you broke the two out, the treatment system would be losing money. And the distribution system looks a lot better. It's got a positive $216,000 surplus or cash flow. So this is going to be really important, because this is kind of the theme for what we're going to talk about tonight, that the treatment system seems to be being subsidized by the distribution system. So the income approach, it's tough to value in negative cash flows. So what we did was, we took that cash flow and we increased the rates in our model to sufficiently cover future expenses. Now, to do this, we had to increase rates pretty high. So what this means is, in order to achieve this valuation here, this 5.7 billion that you see at the bottom, rates are going to have to increase substantially. Substantially from current levels, it's being driven a lot by capital, future capital that's needed. The average rate increase that was needed in the model was a 7.6% annually, which is pretty high. And in the first few years, there was some very large increases that had to be done. And really, just to go back a slide, a lot of this is going to be driven by the treatment system starting out at a negative cash flow number. So the whole system's doing okay on its own, but if you break it out, the treatment's not doing great. Then we looked at the market approach. This is kind of similar to the income approach. We do what's called an EBITDA approach, where it's earnings before interest, tax, depreciation, and amortization. It basically measures a utility's operating performance. So it's kind of the same as cash flow. And you can see that the original EBITDA calculation there is that negative $59,000. We had to increase that. So what we did was, we took the two-year projection from our model, which includes rate increases as we just discussed. That gives us an adjusted EBITDA. And then you can see, this one trades on different multiples in the market as well. So here, you're anywhere from 15 times to 25 times EBITDA. And that puts you anywhere from 2.5 million to 4.2 million for the market approach. When we bring it all together, we did some weighting. We weighted the income approach 90%, and we gave the cost and market approaches each a weight of 5%. And again, that's because the income approach, really the approach that the township, the city, any unregulated utility that would be running this system would really care about is the income, the income approach, as opposed to the cost and market approaches. The ultimate value is what willing buyer is going to pay. And we came up with a range for the water system of 4.5 to 6 billion dollars. So kind of looking at it as a whole, rates would have to increase substantially. And then the city would only achieve 4.5 to 6 million dollars. So it's not a very enticing valuation for the city on the water side. Nonetheless, that's what we came up with. We always like to throw this in there as well. Other things you can think about, we just listed the rates here for the city. You can see the average annual water bill there at the bottom. And this just talks about rates again. We hit it a couple of times. If the rates wouldn't be increased, and you tried to sell the system with a negative cash flow, probably won't have a buyer, right? The township's probably not going to be able to buy the system that's losing money. So rates would have to be increased prior to the sale, to make it attainable. You know, this, this makes it less enticing for the city, because you're going to raise rates and then sell it. It doesn't, that doesn't always work out too well. But nonetheless, that's what the numbers say. And that's how, that's how it would work out. The last point there is that the rates, there would be additional rate analysis that would be needed if this would go forward. Obviously, any new customers that would come on would help with rates. But really, it's that breakout of the treatment system. And it's kind of a unique thing, because we usually don't breakout systems. We usually sell an entire system. It would be treatment and collection, not just the treatment. But here, breaking out the treatment really just depresses the value of the system. Any debt that's tied to the treatment system would have to be paid off prior to closing. And any funds that the city would have on hand in that water treatment fund, less any remaining liabilities, would get returned to the city. The last thing there is that any transfers that are coming from the water treatment fund to the general fund would obviously cease if the system was sold. Now, it's important to note that you would still have the water collection system, so you'd still be able to make transfers from that, just not the treatment fund. I think Mike told me that the city does make some of those transfers, so that would come into play here.
Yeah, the city, the city contributes about, or the font, the font, all the funds contribute about a little over $300,000 annually to the general fund. So a significant portion of our, of our administrative transfer comes out of water and sewer. So this would be a big problem if we, if we had this.
And one thing, one thing I did want to mention too, is that since the treatment system is losing money and the collection system is subsidizing the treatment system, there's a potential that the collection system rates could be lowered if the treatment system was sold. Because if you look at the collection system on its own, it looks a lot better and it's got a bigger cash flow. Now, it's hard to say that rates can be lowered just like that. You know, there's a lot of things that come into play, future capital, future customer growth. But that is definitely something that could be looked at if the city would move forward with the sale of the treatment system.
And something to remember too, this is, this, this analysis is, in a sense, theoretical, because the theory, the thought process behind this is that the commodity charge to the water and sewer charges are basically to cover the treatment costs. And your ready-to-serve card charges, in theory, are to handle your distribution and collection costs. Now, we, 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 all the money goes into one pot, so we treat it all the same. So while you look at this as a cash loss on the, on the distribution end, the fund in itself, totally, you know, we're, we're still seeing, we're seeing positive cash flow. It's just the way we're theoretically breaking this out.
Yeah, that's a great point, Mike. So if you go back to this slide, you look at your 21, 22 budget, you're, for the entire system, you're looking at a positive cash flow, $157,000. It's that breakout that really hurts. And when you do that breakout that Mike just said, that's what really hurts the treatment system, helps the distribution system, and drives this entire valuation. Are any questions on the water? Before we get into the wastewater? Is that a question, Mike, or no? I can't?
No, we're good. We're good.
Okay, okay. Let me pull up the wastewater here.
Ben, I do have a question for you.
Yes.
Did we include land value in these valuations at all?
We did not include land value. And typically, the land that we've seen doesn't have, usually have a huge value. Now, that can be different if there's some special circumstance here. But no, land value is not included.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so now getting into wastewater. So the wastewater system is going to look pretty similar. There's actually a longer report that goes behind the wastewater system valuation, that I think Mike has probably made available to you. But I wanted to put it in PowerPoint to make it more easily presentable to you all. We'll start out the same way. So here, we're looking at the wastewater treatment system, not the collection and conveyance pipes that are located under the city. So this is the wastewater, wastewater treatment plant and associated apparatuses that are there, including a big pump station, which is going to drive a lot of the value difference. Same slide as before. The only difference here is, we listed in 1A. The difference with the sewer is, or the wastewater, is the city owns 82% of the system, township owns 18%. So it's already a bit of a shared ownership structure. And obviously, when we show you the value here, and if you eventually sell the system, that would have to be taken into account. The value that we're going to show you is for the entire system, 100%. Point B, C, and D, I'm not going to go over those again, but it's the same for the wastewater treatment system. You know, rates, employees, public outreach, transparency, all extremely important if the city should decide to go forward.
Just to clarify one thing with that 82%, so it's not technically that they own it. They have 18% capacity. The city owns the facility, but they have 18% capacity, just to, just to confirm that.
Okay. Good, that's a good confirmation. Thank you. Again, this is a similar pace to the last one. So the only purchaser that we're considering for the valuation is Lowell Township. We're not looking at an American Water or somebody else, a private buyer coming in, only looking at what it would, what it would be if Lowell Township acquired the city's system. Again, we're going to focus on that income approach, and we're going to weight it 90%, just like the water treatment valuation. Wastewater treatment plant, 1.42 million gallons per day, built in 1989. Uses an oxidation process at the plant. There you can see, there's the city, the 82% of the township has capacity of 18% at the plant. The sewer system has been run historically by SUEZ that are operating the wastewater treatment plant, not the collection system, just the plant. And then the third point there to see is, the city and the township have a contract that governs their relationship, which includes the township's wholesale rate, which is a different rate than the city pays, or a city customer would pay, excuse me. We did look at the sewer, the wastewater rates as a whole, and this is the entire rate, collection and treatment. And we also compared it to a few neighbors. We like to do this just to make sure that it's within range. And we found that of the available information that was out there, it appears that the city, the city's rates are market rates in your area, and similar to others. So getting into the valuation, we'll start with the cost approach again. We got the asset list for the wastewater. We then went through the process with Mike, breaking out the treatment versus collection system assets. And only the treatment system assets are going to be valued. We did the same adjusting of the useful service lives that we talked about before. And here's the full asset list that was provided. So this goes a whole way back to 1967, and it also includes some stuff that's being done this year. The estimated original cost of all of these assets at the plant were about $8.1 million. Since that time, about 3.4 has been depreciated. And that leaves the wastewater treatment system with a net book value of about $4.7 million. So similar to the water, that 4.7, that's not the final value. We would expect that the system would sell for a multiple of that value, anywhere from 1.25 to 1.75 times. And that brings us to a final value under the cost approach of $7,173,000. The income approach, here we're showing historical financials. So again, income approach, we're thinking cash flows. So these are the historical cash flows, 18 through 20. You can see the system has an operating loss in each of those three years. But when we go over to the budget, the budget actually had a positive starting cash flow. However, when we do the breakout, the same thing that we did with the water, the treatment system is, has a surplus of $17,000, which, you know, at least it's positive unlike the water, but it's a very small number. This is the operating cash flow before any debt is paid and before any capital is spent. So that's what the system would, would be generating if you split apart the collection and the treatment. So here you can see the collection system would be doing very well on its own, with a net cash flow of $346,000. So we got a very similar situation here. When you break it out, it appears the collection system is subsidizing the treatment system. For this one, we went a little deeper, and we developed what's called a debt service coverage ratio financial model. So a debt service coverage ratio is calculated by taking the net operating income and dividing it by the total debt service. And I just included a little example here to kind of illustrate. If you had operating revenues of $1 million and expenses of $890,000, you'd have an income of $110,000. And that's before debt. And then if your annual debt service was $100,000, you'd have a debt service coverage ratio of 1.1x. It's basically an indication of the ability of a city to meet its debt service payments on the debt that it's issued. It's used by a lot of rating agencies, other, other stakeholders. It can be really important when looking, looking at a utility system. Typically, the minimum DSCR that we see is a 1.1x, what was shown in that example up there. So in our model, we'll make sure that at all times, we have a 1.1x ratio. In this DSCR financial model, we included future capital spending. And for the sewer, this is extremely important. Right now, the plant shares about $9.2 million of various treatment plant repair and renovation projects to the current plant through 2029. So that's a pretty big number on its own. But then additionally, the city's also expecting the need for an upgrade within the next decade. Still in the planning phases, but Mike tells me there's an estimated minimum cost of $7.8 million, which again is significant.
And that is if we suffer, we, we end the, the town, the agreement with the township, but we're just doing the upgrade for our capacity for our, for our customers.
Right. These projects, so forgetting about sale for a second, you know, you're talking about $17 million of projects there. They're going to have a significant impact on future required rates. And I'm sure you're all aware of that. But just wanted to reiterate, you're going to see that a couple of times in here. Regardless of whether or not the system is sold, rates are definitely on an upward trajectory in the wastewater system. And that's what we got to get into here. This one was, was even a little bit worse than the water. So in order to pay for all that capital, the 10-year average rate increase that was needed was 14%, which was extremely high. And again, it's being primarily driven by the capital plan, not by the sale. It's more the capital plan that's doing it. That has significant rate increases upfront. So, you know, if the system has $17,000 as its operating cash flow, it's going to have to pay debt, it's going to have to pay capital out of that $17,000 bucks. So that's going to have to increase substantially. And that means rate increases or growth in the system, which we did assume that some new customers would come on. But it doesn't, it doesn't make up enough. It's really going to have to come from rate increases. Point three down there, we just wanted to illustrate. So right now, as we just said a little bit ago, the cost approach of the book value of the system is $4.7 million. But in the next eight years, the system's going to spend 9.2, and then another 7.8. So you can see that it's almost, you know, creating a new system. And that's going to have a big effect on rates. That being said, when we did it and we put it into the income approach, we came up with a value of $7,250,000. Again, point two, and I hate to keep reiterating, but that value is heavily dependent on those rate increases happening prior to the sale, or, or right after the sale. Because obviously, whoever buys the system, the township does buy it, they're going to have to operate just like you would, and increase those rates just like you would as well. The market approach here, we took the original EBITDA, that 17,000, and we took a two-year projection of it. And you can see that we included those rate increases. That gave us an adjusted EBITDA of $361,000, which is about, about what we'd expect from a system. So when you look at that, the market approach is $7,229,000. It just so happened that all the approaches here kind of worked out to be around $7 million, which really wasn't planned, which is kind of why it shook out. Again, since the only buyer is the township, we elected to give that 90% weight to the income approach. Here, it doesn't matter that much, because they're all similar values. But when we do that, we come up with a final calculated value of $7,245,000 for the wastewater treatment system. And again, heavily dependent on those future rate increases. Same thing here. Any debt that's tied to the treatment system would have to be paid off prior to selling. Additionally, any funds that would be on the wastewater treatment fund would stay with the city. And then the transfers, similar. But again, the wastewater collection system will remain with the city, so those transfers could still happen. With that, I'm happy to answer questions on the wastewater system.
Basically, the, as I said in my memo, the Reader's Digest version is, there's really no circumstance where selling the facility makes any sense to the city. It just doesn't make sense. And, you know, as, as you recall, this would require a board of people. I couldn't even recommend this for, for you to even consider.
And so at, at PFM, we don't really see what efficiencies the township would bring. You know, sometimes when we're selling systems, or a lot of the times when we're selling systems, we're selling it to maybe a bigger player that has a lot more customers, can spread out costs, and do all kinds of things that would make it more efficient for that system. But the township, we don't really see what efficiencies would be brought. So, you know, looking at these values and the rates separating the system and what that does to rates, like Mike said, we just don't really see a lot of value for the city in selling these systems at this time.
Welcome. Any more questions for Ben? Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, everybody.
Anything for me?
That came out a lot better than I thought it would, the breakdowns.
Yeah, and remember, a lot of that's theoretical because of the way we structured it. But it's, you're gonna have to, I mean, we know that we have capital improvements regardless. A lot of the capital additions are, obviously, to satisfy the needs of the township with the current agreement and with whatever else you would ever wanna consider. You don't have, I mean, we know that, at least with the wastewater treatment plant, we're at some point, we're gonna have to do about $7.8 million upgrade regardless. Anything else, it's not our issue.
Well, I did notice in his report, he said that there was a life expectancy of about 70 years, and we're like 55 years into it.
Yeah.
So somewhere between now and then, that's when you're looking at that 9.2 or before that, what are you anticipating improvements?
I have to look at the capital list yet. I'm wondering if maybe some of the stuff that we talked about were intermingled, because I think some of that 9.7, and I have to look at what I gave him again, but I believe a lot of that is the plant expansion already. Because this doesn't even include, this stuff doesn't even include Monroe and Washington. That's a whole nother issue that hopefully I will be bringing to you in the next couple weeks. But...
Mike, that's no collection, that's no collection system at all. That's just treatment programs that were on that list.
Right.
The collection's additional, right?
Yeah, but like I said, I have to look at the capital list, because I think, my concern is that some of the stuff got marked twice. Because I think, because I know, there's a number of things that have to be done in the next 10 years, but I think a lot of those things are part of the expansion. So I gotta double check.
That would make some sense, Mike, because the capital, the projected capital spend that we just talked about seems pretty high with this kind of system. Spending $17 million, that seems pretty high.
Well, I think the $17 million is probably right if you include, but if you don't include, if you include the collection work too.
Right, yeah, just treatment, $17 million, that would seem, when we were looking at this, we're going, how is this system, how are these customers gonna pay for $17 million just for the treatment side? It's gonna be tough.
Yeah, I believe this is bull.
Right.
Yeah, and then a 14% increase for five years would double your... So if you paid $100 a month down, you're gonna pay 200.
In five years, yeah.
The rates would be double, yeah.
Yeah, you would have in time doubled. Yeah.
That'd be hard to solve.
Unfortunately, it's gonna come to a point where you will be forced to do upgrades whether you like it or not.
Anything else on item A or B? All right, board and commission reports, click.
Laura's pretty happy that the fundraising goals have been met at the almost final hour. Dave Austin's working with the state. There might be a two-part completion to sew it all up. We're being a little proactive. Betsy's working on a new website. And one of the things we're starting to discuss now, because we've met the fundraising, is we gotta raise money to keep the thing maintained. We get about $6,000 from the township and the city, but we figure we need 20 to 30 just to keep the asphalt in good shape and all that kinda stuff. And we're working on some projects there. That's what I got.
Cool. Jim?
Marty filled in for me at Little Light Power, so I don't know how long it went, but Marty?
No, actually, I'm up in Cleveland.
Okay.
And I was gonna zoom in, but they had no communication numbers or nothing over there.
I don't know if you're doing Zoom anymore anymore.
So that was my only option at that point.
It's all right.
We did do coffee with council, and it was very well attended. It was kinda, had a fun afternoon, or morning, I should say. Lots of things I'd like to thank Officer Van Solcom. He came in just to see how it goes and ended up being part of the whole conversation. Explained and helping out, and I thank him. Charlie West from the Light Power was there and explained the new AMI meters and how they work and why they're really needed. Because you could be out of power sleeping, and they know it, and you don't know it. They have you back on before you even get out of bed. So that's a great thing about that. Planning Commission, well, we had a special guest sits next to me here. We approved another recreational marijuana place. They found the 18 parking spots that they needed. They have some fencing issues they're gonna deal with and a couple other things, but that's all internal. So they got approved as long as they can follow through. And we had one backup, so...
Can I ask, the one that you approved, have they gotten their approval from the state?
Not as of yet. They have to get us first before the state.
Oh.
And then the one just simply pulled his request, so we're already seeing them.
I just mention it because we're getting a lot of pushback from people. And they're saying, oh, there's so many. Well, not all of them have gotten approved by the state. So we can say yes, if the state says no, they'll never open.
That's it. Ben?
Parks and Rec, we meet tomorrow. We're happy for Matt Chasing and Butler. I am up with Chambers. Everything went well. We took a break in July, so we were catching up on all of the summer fun. All the events have gone on really well. They've all been really well attended, which is always nice to hear. And that's about it.
Okay. And the authority got canceled because it was the Thursday fairing. So nobody wanted to deal with that part. Discussion or questions on the budget reports?
We haven't had any unusual expenditures really yet over the year. The biggest thing we've had to pay is the insurance. We always pay that in July, so that's our biggest bill. The construction project, we're just starting to get bills out as we speak. And I think there were a couple payable tonight. So I do, I've been talking to some of the facilities that are close to opening. And Mike, you know, just trying to make sure. September 30th is the cutoff for the revenue. So you get, state gives you revenue based on how many facilities are in the city on September 30th, which is the end of the state's fiscal year. So they kinda projected four in the budget. I think it'll be three for sure, the fourth one. In talking with them, they're trying, but I'm not so sure. We do, we have, I've been tracking the, I have been tracking the, there's been news stories out. The excise tax is growing up, it's gone up quite a bit in the last couple months. I believe, it was either, I can't remember if it was 56% from last year increase or 56% in one month from June to July. I can't remember the exact one, but I've read numerous reports. So I don't, I'm hoping the excise tax allocation per facility is a little bit higher than this year, but I really won't know that for a few more months.
You mean the income the state's getting?
Correct.
They didn't raise the excise.
No, the excise tax is 10%, but the sales have been much higher than they projected.
Okay, thanks.
Isn't one of our neighboring communities being sued right now?
There's multiple, Safi actually, for capping facilities. Easton Township is in litigation right now. I know of Port Huron, LaPire, I believe Adrian, I could be wrong on that, Alpena. There's, I mean, I hate to say it, but the truth is, you're either all in or you're all out. If you try to cap it, you're getting sued, you have no legal defense. I mean, even to the point where if you had a lottery, where you just set a date, said, okay, have your facilities on a certain date, and we're just gonna draw a hat, that is subject to legal challenge, where you probably don't have a chance to win. So it'll be interesting to see how the case law comes out in the next couple months, or a year, a couple years, as these go through the courts system, so...
They're gonna pay whether they wanna lose.
Right.
Okay, any questions on that? Aren't the city manager reporting?
Yeah, a couple things. I've been on vacation for most of the time since the last council meeting. I did go to the fair, it was, we had fun. No one really likes horses.
I mean, it's one of us.
I know someone who doesn't.
Even the little ones. Those ones are dangerous.
No one.
I don't, I don't at all.
The Amity project's moving along pretty smoothly. The, that's really the last project. That's really the last project. We're just finishing up some restoration work on the other projects. I believe Formans mostly, punch list is mostly complete. One thing of note, the census. We did get 2020 census numbers. The city went up in population, 395 people, or 9.5%. So that will, that will provide a slight increase to your state revenue sharing and your Act 51. Do I know how much? No. But I do know that the, part of those formulas base your last census count. And we were going up to 2010 census before, so we're going up 2020 now, so... And that's about all I have.
Okay, any questions for Mike?
Just one.
Yeah?
When are we gonna start repairing this building?
He's working on it.
Calls in two, a couple different builders in the area. One called me back, was gonna check the building out, they're down one across the street. And that was last week with the fair covenant. I fear he's probably tied up with that. Expect to hear from him this week.
Yeah, because their window, weather windows closing animals. So I just wanna make sure we get it down before winter.
Dan's working on it.
Talked with our other neighbor next door, who recently retired. And I talked to him, I'm retired.
No.
Talked to him, he crossed the street, and he's like, yeah, I'm retired too. Let me take a look, and then I just move on.
Oh, speaking of construction, the Batman projects move along too.
Okay, good? Good, all right, appointments. One application. We've been on a huge tear of just completely overqualified people for these courts, so I'm pretty excited about it. Downtown Historic District Commission has had a vacancy for a while. Lisa Plant from the Historic Museum would like to fill that spot. I would assume there are no objections.
Yes.
Correct.
They were the better person.
Me neither. So, all right, so Lisa's on that. Councilwoman, that's Leah.
The fair was wonderful. I went with, some of my neighborhood members came out, and then we went to the fair. That was lovely. I keep reiterating this, but it is always nice to see the little community joining each other for events. It was always fun to see. Second thing I sort of wanted to mention was, just in the past couple of weeks, I've had quite a few city residents and just little residents reach out to me for help and resources in regards to bills or housing. And I just want to say that I'm an open door. You can come to me with anything, and I will try to help you find resources. Part of my job is to represent the city, and I take that seriously. So I am a non-judgment zone if you need help.
Cool. Martin?
I would like to say it's a good feeling to know that Austin, Little Township, who's being represented here tonight, came together to get the trail system finally put to bed. We moved forward with it. It was kind of, I don't think too many years ago that would have happened between the township and the city, but today, working together, I think we work really well together. And it was a good thing to happen, so... Congratulations.
To all of you guys as well.
Thank you.
That's it. Jim?
The only covenant I got, Mike, going forward until the punch list items get done on the show with the lighting and everything else, can we hold payment until these things are done? Have we paid everybody off? I'm disappointed that that list continues to see the roll of things.
I know Wolverine's been paid. There was a number, there was a punch list that the architect said, and they, the list I had, they met it, so I released the retainage on that.
Yeah, but I noticed the other night, coming through the lights again.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the lights.
I know who you are, but I didn't know if we had any leverage by not...
Well, technically, the, you have one year of 100% warranty coverage, so... You know, they can be paid, hold, and still have to come back and do it. And there is legal actions you can do, it's just a little...
Yeah, and I didn't get a lot of part of under Wolverine, right?
Not all, no, no. The light, sadly, were separate.
Separate subcontractors.
Yeah, there were a number of separate subcontractors, so, for a lot of that specialty stuff.
All right, that's it.
I'd just like to stress communication being key. The meeting Saturday started out kinda confusing, but we stuck with it, and we all learned. And I appreciate people showing up and asking questions and continuing to ask questions. And thanks to Van Solcom, we were able to answer it. And then we found the root of the problem after about 40 minutes. So sometimes it takes a while, but we got there. So please show up to things if you have questions, or let us know some way.
And don't believe what you read on the internet.
Please.
I attended the fair like I do every year. Only a couple more of them down there at the fairgrounds, where I can walk to. I attended Market on Main too. Seemed pretty busy downtown. Perfect weather for it. They're getting sued. Everybody who put a cap is getting a lawsuit, so... It's happening exactly like we worried it would if we would have done it, so, there you go.
All you gotta do is Google marijuana lawsuits in Michigan, and they just...
And what you're getting is new buildings, cleaned up properties, fences, windows, paint. You're getting zero crime, correct?
Yep.
And you're getting money coming into the city. So for everybody whose mentality is, it's gonna be a huge problem. It hasn't to date. Jim?
Make a motion adjourn at 7:50, no, 7:49.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, consent, or...